Yep.
All right, well, we are recording. So Chair Oats, if you want to call us to order.
Okay, this is a strategic planning session for January 25th, 2021. I'm going to call it to order for the county commissioners here in County. So go ahead, Sarah.
All right. Well, welcome. This is our, our final session here to wrap up our strategic planning work that we've been doing since December. And we're in the home stretch here. So I just received a message that some internet's connections aren't stable. Mine, mine here is stable as everybody. If you just kind of raise of hands, everybody or thumbs up. Yeah, that's helpful. It seems like some are good. So if somebody's having connection issues, you might try just signing off and signing back in or calling in to get a more stable connection. Uh, let's see, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if we can go through the agenda. All right. So our agenda for today, we want to work through refining the outcomes that we're going for are refining the goals and supporting strategies that we worked on last time. And, and then we're going to confirm our team agreement on the goals and strategies. Prioritize the goals to make sure that staff has clear direction to be able to budget accordingly and, and know kind of how you'd like to move these things forward and what order. Agree on some values that will help guide the implementation of the plan and then discuss an implementation structure to ensure plan accountability. As, as you all move forward in the implementation process. So we'll start by just doing a quick team check in and recap of our last workshop. Uh, then we'll get into the goal refinement work and I, you should have received the list of goals last week to kind of take a look and, and see if you had any thoughts on that. I re-formatted to try and get things looking more consistent. And so we want to make sure when we go through that, that we didn't lose the intent of the conversations you were having and, and make sure that everything looks clear and, and make sense. Then we'll get into, we're going to do a prioritization exercise where we'll have confirmed the shared goals and strategies. And then you guys will do some voting and polling to, to figure out where the group stands on, on what you all believe is most important. We'll have some group discussion around that, have the commission do a final weigh-in on what the priorities will be. We'll take a break at 3:35. Take 10 minutes to be able to get up and move around and then finalize those, make sure we have, we'll have extra time if we need to do any more finalizing of the priorities and get any, any final clarity on that. About four o'clock, we'll start our conversation around the guiding principles. And, um, and see how, you know, what's going to guide us in, in moving these things forward. Both as a governing body and as an organization, we'll talk about the plan implementation process. And then just kind of do a quick reflection and talk about the next steps and wrap up by five o'clock. Um, just as a reminder, so whoops, uh, our ground rules that we set for the first meeting, just again, in, in this virtual setting, always exercise patience with the technology and each other. We, in order to just indicate that you want to speak, use the hand raised feature on Zoom or I try to catch it in, in your squares, just raise your hand. If I don't catch that, that you raised it via Zoom, uh, please be sure to speak freely and say what you think. I think that's been really helpful in moving these conversations along. Participate, engage, share ideas, be open-minded and don't be defensive. And I think that will help us get to where we need to be, which is a five-year strategic plan. Let's see, any questions about any of that? Is everybody good with this, this game plan? All right, not hearing any dissenters. So I'm gonna stop the share here. Where did my menu go? Um, okay. So I did get one piece of feedback on the spreadsheet that went out that there was a duplicate under goal five. And so we'll, we'll talk about that. If you didn't pick it up, there was just one of the things was listed there twice. So instead of having three actions under that, we only have, or instead of having four actions, we only have three. So I'll point that out when we get there. Uh, but just to kind of recap from our, our last session, oh, and I forgot to mention for many members of the public, I don't know that we have anybody from the public on right now. But just in case we do, this is a work session, so we don't do public comment when the commission approves the, approves the plan, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment on it at that point in time. Okay, so, uh, let's see, getting back to session three, quick recap. We were, last time did this, the crazy idea mapping exercise, and then we started to refine that a bit and, and, you know, see where the themes were emerging. And I had you guys in small groups work on the goals and, and starting to identify strategies. So I took all of that information and tried to simplify it into a list of, of consistent goals and strategies. And where we ended up, I put it in the spreadsheet, but for today's purposes, to be able on this visual platform, I put it in, in the mural board. And so you can see everything listed here. As I mentioned, there was an error in goal five. The review weed and pest control ordinance was in there twice. And so we just, I removed it, I removed the second one. So, uh, so now we have four actions there instead of five. So that was, um, so we're going to start here today, and I just want to get the feedback it from the group is where we need clarity on these items. I want to make sure that we didn't lose the intent of your conversation by any of the edits that I made and trying to kind of condense and simplify. One of the big changes that you'll see from the last session to this one is I consolidated, I'm going to move back over to the idea mapping. I consolidated a couple areas. So you guys had this provide public safety services reflected about the community, this area of fundamental competence of government. And then, um, it was this one, this kind of this all encompassing compensation package for internal growth, just really focused on how to in, improve internal retention and recruitment for the organization. And so all of those I combined into this area here of in, improve the fundamental competence of Hood River County's government. And so you'll see hopefully the, the intent of your, um, your conversations described here as, as different actions in, in these strategies. So I'm just going to be quiet for a moment and see if the team has any, any comments or points of clarity on, on any of these goals. And we can just kind of go through one by one, but this is staff's opportunity to make sure that the goal's clear. That, you know, it's clear what the outcome is and that the actions make sense, that they give staff enough direction that staff would be able to pick this up and, and be able to map out a game plan to move it forward. So any comments? Yes, Commissioner Babbitts?
I have a bunch of comments. I'm just trying to understand, is this the time where we're going to go through these goals and actions and discuss any changes we want in them or any?
Yes.
Changes. Okay. Uh, so the first thing is just an observation that in a normal world, I think all of goal two is really a subsection of goal one. That economics, financial stability and strength is part of fundamentally competent government. And that therefore I would view all of these actions really as actions necessary to further the actions under goal one. Now, the, the fact that we did it as two separate items, I think given the, the special circumstances with this, the fact that we're operating in an operating levy now, that we have a, a very specific, uh, thing in mind that we need to highlight for the public. I, I think it's very appropriate that it is a separate goal. But I did want to simply make that observation because I think, um, that kind of, that's at least the way that I think about it. Uh, and similarly on goal four, i- i- it's kind of funny. I, I read through goal four and it took me quite a while to get through it. And I realized that what it's trying to say is that everything should be communicated in bilingually and in plain language. And i- i- it's almost a little self-referential that, uh, we take so many words to say that things should be in plain language. But, uh, that's what I take from, uh, from goal four. And specific change I think that I would ask for is that we say that things should be bilingual, there should be plain language and they should be, the communication should be broadly targeted. Where we say, uh, through social media, uh, that seems to have been translated in a lot of our efforts into through Facebook. And I think that there's a serious problem that at the county, we're, we're, we're depending on Facebook too much. And that doesn't get to very large swaths of our community. Um, so I think that somewhere I would like to add the word broadly, broadly targeted in, in goal. Uh, in, in some of the actions for goal four.
Okay.
Should I keep going or did you get that down?
Um, I have. So if you can, I just added this note and I, so it says just in throughout the actions for goal four, I just want to make sure I'm capturing that. Correctly. And maybe, maybe it goes in the overarching goal. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, to me, the, the goal of our, our communication goal should be that we communicate bilingually and plain language and broadly targeted. So that we reach everybody. So maybe that is overarching goal.
Broad language. And what was the last thing you said?
Well, I, I just had, I did the same thing in different words, broadly targeted. So we get.
Oh, broadly targeted, okay. Um, okay.
Yeah, it's plain language. I think that, that's where we got confused. It's plain language, not broad language.
Thank you. Okay. Um, all right. Uh, Karen, Commissioner Joplin.
Thank you. Um, in reference to Arthur's comments, I believe it was number two, if you could move the slide over.
You bet.
I agree with what he was pointing out that one and two are a little bit blended together. And I was thinking that the number one stated goal, I was feeling it doesn't really represent the items we have listed. I was, the items we have listed, I think really more speak to internal health of the agency and workplace. Morale and kind of more of the internal entity pieces of the county. And competence is more about having the skills to complete a task. So I see that more maybe in falling into the goal number two of the how to get work done around competence and that goal number one, me being needing to be a little more internally directed.
Okay. And then, so, so then the fundamental competence piece, you feel like that's fits more somewhere within this language here in goal two?
Yes, I felt so.
Other comments from, we're still missing some of the commissioners, but Chair Oats, any reflections from you? On how this is coming together?
Not at this time. I, I'm okay with what's been said so far by Karen and Arthur.
What about staff's reaction on, on either of these changes or just how things have been presented? Oh, Commissioner Babbitts? You have to unmute. Sorry. I can't, we can't hear you. There you go.
I'm sorry, I was, I was doing, it says hold the spacebar and we'll unmute you, but apparently that doesn't work on my keyboard. Last thing is that I've only, um, I was, I had not yet commented on five and six. I have comments there also. Do you want to take those now or do you want to go through?
Sure, yeah.
One through four first.
Let's take those now.
Okay. So number five, I, I think is sort of interesting. We seem to have focused on a single industry, uh, which is the ag industry. And what I suggest, whoops, what I suggest is that the, the, the goal is to support economic growth and high quality job creation. There are very special needs in agriculture because of the special land use considerations. And I think that's what most of what the actions are that we've highlighted under goal five. Uh, but I think that the broader category is supporting economic growth. I mean, for example, you know, clearly, uh, we're concerned about our manufacturing sector. Uh, we're concerned about our service sector. And we will be taking actions on a regular basis to service those needs. But agriculture, because with land use, uh, characteristics does require these special attentions. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I guess I'm just, you know, would there be, and we can make an overarching goal, but it does feel, there does then feel like there's a bit of a disconnect between what the strategies are and what the overarching goal is because the strategies are specific to agriculture. And so then.
If I had my, if I had my way, I would go back to the days when we had an economic coordinator as part of the, uh, as part of the county, uh, county government that looked at and serviced the other sectors of our economy. I, I don't think that's realistic in the short term, but I think in the long term, it's something we should be looking at. So for a five-year goal, I, I would like to see that personally. Especially if I, can I give a, um, a link? If I share a link, is that?
Yeah, if you share it, I think it'll show up in the comments.
Okay. So what I've shared is the, um, so the US Department of Commerce Bureau of Labor Statistics last year started publishing gross domestic product data at the county level, uh, which is just really an amazing level of granularity. It was never available before. And, uh, the link. Uh, yeah, unfortunately it didn't give me the whole link. Um, you're, you're gonna need my help to use that link, but that link gets you close to the sets of tables that show you, uh, sector by sector within our county, uh, what their contributors are to our economy. And, uh, it's, it's really quite interesting and I've spent dozens and dozens of hours poring through that data. So I encourage people at some point to take a look at that stuff. And then I'd like to get on to number six, the forest management plan.
Okay.
I disagree with 6.4. And I don't think that that matches the discussion that we had in the first session. Clearly the tree farm is a critical part of our revenue. But we're not making any, any other budgetary decisions in this strategic goal summary. And it feels like we've picked out one item and we're saying that in all cases, we're going to prioritize tree farm over anything else. Which I don't think is true. I think it's a budgetary decision. I think on a case-by-case basis, we would make decisions on, on priority. But for example, if someone came along and told me that they were going to pay us three times the rate that we get for cutting our, our logs to do something else with them, we might seriously consider that. Uh, so I would hate to see us, uh, have this broad statement that the tree farm is prioritized above anything else in the forest management plan.
Okay. Other, other comments, Commissioner Babbitts, on any of the other goals for?
I am through. I will be quiet.
You don't have to be quiet, but we will, we will see what others have to say about these changes or suggestions. Again, questions from the commissioners, Chair Oats or Commissioner Joplin?
Uh, this Chair Oats, I'll make a couple of comments on those last two subjects that Arthur's talking about.
Okay.
Anybody who's lived here for a long time knows that we have the situation where we have a lot of forest land, a lot of ag land and a lot of demand to change it. We've put these things to the top of our priorities over the years because, uh, there's an economic value in the long term for, for using these, uh, different industries such as the ag lands and, and the forest lands. It, it create an income over time. The problem with not supporting restrictions and whatnot on those two areas is that in the short run, there's always a lot of ways to make more money quickly over a short period of time. But there's not necessarily sustainability like there is in these agricultural or these forest lands where it goes on in perpetuity for generations. And, and it's, it's kind of hard to, to get a hold of that because unless you've seen how that's changed over years, I've seen forest lands in the county taken out and putting back in twice in my lifetime already. And, and it's just amazing how it continues to go and how right now it's, the forest lands are, are the second most important income for Hood River County's governance. Because it belongs to the people of Hood River County. And the agriculture with its very strong, uh, economic value for Hood River County, not only for the governance and whatnot and all the taxes and all the economic processes that go through with that huge industry. But it's also important not only to Hood River County and the state of Oregon, but even nationally is, is up to 40% of what's produced here in Hood River County is exported. And these are pretty strong, important industries that are here because we've put priorities on them to try to keep them. And they've done a good job of supporting this county over the years. And I hate to take that priority away from that. That's my comment.
So just to make sure that I'm clear, um, on what your Chair Oats, do you want to see the 6.4 stay in the?
Say that again, please, sir.
Do you want to see the, the action, the 6.4, the prioritizing the tree farm and support of the forest management plan? And to say, see that stay in the, in the list of strategies to support that goal?
Yes.
Yes. And then you also want to see that, um, instead of having this broader focus on economic growth and goal number five, this, keep it specific to the ag industry. Is that accurate?
You know, I don't have a problem with ha- having statements like that in other areas of industry or not, but these two are so huge and so important to this county. It seems important to have, have the individual goals there. I mean, it's so difficult to maintain this agricultural base in Hood River County because of all the demands, try and change it to something else. So I, I would, I would, you know, Arthur, if you, if you think we need to have that totally for different industries, uh, then let's put another one in there, but I wouldn't take this one out.
Uh, can I comment on that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, uh, I certainly, these are two very sep- separate issues, the, the agriculture and the forestry, uh, we should really view them separately. And in agriculture, what I was trying to say, uh, and I, I should be really clear. I fully understand and fully support the efforts that we have to make as a community to protect and preserve our farmland. So you're not going to find me, I don't think you'll find a bit of air between or a bit of light between our positions on that issue. What I'm saying is that as a county government, uh, we have many, many jobs in other sectors. And we, as the county government, should be providing the support necessary to generate, uh, and to support development of jobs in those areas. And, and I think Chair Oats is, is exactly right that agriculture is going to be the one constant that we're going to see industries change. You know, it used to be ladder manufacturing and sprayer manufacturing was the big, you know, manufacturing business in town. And you don't find many people, uh, manufacturing sprayers anymore. Now they're doing aircraft parts. We're going to see that change again and again. And I think that's healthy. What I'm saying is I want to see something in there so that as we change from the current emphasis on recreational equipment manufacturer, aircraft, uh, you know, uh, UAV related sectors to another sector, that it's not something that catches us by surprise and not something where we're actively fighting against it or, or not providing the necessary support to make those transitions. So if you think that that should be a separate item, I think that's fine. I, I certainly don't want to detract from, uh, the need, uh, from the necessary focus on protecting the agricultural land base. Uh, but I do want some way to acknowledge that that's a, a minority of the jobs in our county and a minority of the, of the dollars. And we better, uh, make sure that that's not all we have. Does that make sense, Mike?
Yeah, it, it does. And, and I agree with you on the, on those other areas of the industry and whatnot. And I totally support putting another section in there stating with how you put it on, on, uh, reinforcement and, uh, governmental help for, for those industry developments.
So the phrase that I use is, uh, support economic growth and high quality job generation. And I'm not sure at what, where we put that in here, but that's kind of the phrasing that I'm using.
Support economic growth and, and high quality?
High quality.
Job.
High quality job generation.
Job generation. Okay. So what I'm hearing is, is having another goal, keep that, keep a goal specific to agriculture and then have another goal that focuses on the larger economy, on supporting the larger economy. True. Is that, did I catch that correctly?
That's what Mike and I said. I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I'm fine with that. Yes.
Commissioner Benton's joined us, so I want to see if, um, we're just going through the, the goals that were sent out. I, that I tried to kind of reframe and reorganize and consolidate into the various areas. And so we're just gathering everybody's input on those and seeing what changes, um, need to be made to make sure that these reflect the direction you got, the commission wants to go. So, so far, um, we have on goal one, changing this because the actions really speak to the internal health of the organization. So changing it to, uh, similarly that goal language to reflect that and, um, putting the language around the fundamental competence, improving the fundamental competence into goal two. Separating out, uh, goal five and creating another goal so that there's one goal focused on the agriculture industry and another goal focused on economic growth for, for other sectors. And then some changes around, uh, the communication and engagement goal. Commissioner Babbitts was recommending, you know, we want, that it basically says, can we want to communicate bilingually and plain language and, and have our communications be broadly targeted? So that's kind of where we're at on the changes so far.
So, and then just picking up, sorry, I'm late, everybody. Um, on the last, at the tail end of the last conversation. So is the proposal to add an additional goal then? In addition to the agricultural component, add a separate one that was the way that Commissioner Babbitts just stated it, which is basically to continue to promote, you know, economic growth. You stated it more succinctly, Arthur, but yeah, that's, that's what's being proposed at this time though?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would support, I would support adding that as well.
Okay. Other comments from, uh, from staff? Again, it's staff, it's important that you weigh in on this because this is where you'll be responsible for taking this information and, and ultimately implementing it.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So this is Brian. Um, I'll try not to be, uh, well, I can't promise.
Our ground rules are to just be, be open and speak up. And that's, that's the most helpful way to go about it. So.
So that's what I'll attempt to do. Um, so staff discussed at our last department head meeting, a few things that we thought would, at least, uh, we thought might be important to share. And, um, one of that was just concerns about, um, the fact that we were, a lot of us are so busy and trying to keep our heads above water, um, that it was really difficult to, to do the homework and give this the attention it deserves. And, uh, I, I think it's important that that's on the table. There's also, uh, concerns, um, we're talked about, about, um, additional work that this may add to staff's already really full plate. And so tho- those two things were discussed and I think worth mentioning at this meeting. Um, and then personally I have concerns about my original. Um, and then personally, I have concerns about my original concern that this, um, could end up on the shelf and the the goals are broad and, um, sometimes lack specifics. So, um, I apologize if that's, uh, not what anybody wanted to hear, but, um, I thought I should share, so.
Brian, any, and and I don't know, I was, I I haven't heard any of the staff context conversation, but that's where, that's where we could use some additional input on where where it is lacking specific. Because the point of this is so that it doesn't just end up on a shelf and is something that can be implemented is that it needs to be somewhat broad enough that staff could take the actions and understand the intent of the commission and be able to scope a project to move it forward. Um, so you don't want it to be so specific that you don't have any flexibility, but you also want to make sure that the intent is clear. And so I guess I'm just, this is a question for staff is like, where is there clarity that's missing? Where do we need additional clarity? Because this is an opportunity to make refinements to the plan to ensure that, um, to ensure it's something that doesn't end up on a shelf and that it does provide useful guidance to the organization. It's, I understand there's capacity concerns as well, but it's not all intended to be, uh, completed. And you guys will have to certainly pace. That's why we're going to do some prioritization to understand what are the most important things to the commissioners and how might we be able to prioritize this to help move pieces of it forward at a time? So respond, I don't know, staff response to that? Or is this just, is this happening too quickly? Does this, there just need to be more time to digest and think about it?
There, this is John Harvey.
Hey, John. Yep.
So on one of the specifics, going back to six point four, I think there was some confusion on that because in the workshop, I think the intent was to prioritize the forest management over the, um, recreation part of it. I think that was kind of the the intent there, and it may have gotten lost.
Okay. Um, other areas where we need to, we need to add some spec- uh, specifics or get clarity? Again, sometimes that can happen. So this is, this is a very normal process to go through. It's, yes, Commissioner Babitz?
I guess, so I I appreciate John, uh, explaining. I could, uh, the question I was going to ask is what does six point four actually mean? Uh, uh, and now that he's clarified it, I guess, uh, I think that's it it it's what Mike was saying earlier, uh, where he was saying that forest land is a long-term asset and we should think of it that way. And we should recognize that if we're going to use forest land for something else, that we're going to very likely be be regretting that decision down the road. And hate to put words in your mouth, Mike, but he said something along those lines. Uh, I entirely agree with that. Uh, with the idea of how we prioritize revenue generation in the forest, I don't know why we know the answer to that today in five years. So I I I'm hoping maybe we can talk about that for a few minutes. Uh, so we we see if it's if it's a common value or if we're we're talking about something differently. Again, what I, what I, in my mind, uh, forest management plan says we have this major community asset and we should manage it in a way, uh, that both provides, uh, financial value as well as broader community values. And we're going to make those decisions, uh, as time goes on, they may change, the balance might change. And for example, some of the revenue generation things we're talking about of different uses of forestry seem to me to fit directly into the area where we might say that we're viewing it as something other than a tree farm. You know, it could be a carbon farm. Uh, I don't, I I I'm just very confused about why we're being so specific in six point four about saying that this is a tree farm above all else. You know, I I I don't want to sell the land. I want to keep it, but I want to use it in a way that makes sense. And I want to, I want to be able to change that analysis as time goes on.
Uh, Doug, you're on. Do you want to make some comments on this, Doug, Theses?
Yeah, I'll try to a little bit, um. You know, there there's definitely probably going to be some different ways, different people will look at this. Um, but you know, specific to six point four, I'll start there first. You know, I I think, I think John is about right there in terms of, I I think part of the original discussion on that, um, at least in the subgroup was that, um, you know, really prioritizing the tree farm relative to the other uses. Um, and and that was beam, uh, the correlation there is to even the Recreation Trail Ordinance, which is really the only, uh, one of the only places where it's, well, it's actually in ordinance, the only place where it says the priority of the tree farm is to provide revenue through the harvest of forest products. And that's the priority of the tree farm. So it's actually in the trail ordinance that way. What that really helps for, for anyone trying to implement the forest management plan and forestry out on the tree farm is that, um, it's not that you don't do other things. We still have to protect wildlife resources, other things required by law that the state might require. A lot of different things. There's a long list of things. Um, and we also do recreation too. But there are times when you're, um, when you're managing and trying to make choices um, that, um, there's conflict. And, uh, if you can't resolve it any other way, you still have to fall back on or lean on what is the priority. And at the end of the day, end of the year, you you're going to, someone's got to be accountable for that. And, um, if it's an arm wrestle the whole time, you end up not being able to manage very effectively. Um, so you do need to have some way to kind of break that gridlock. Um, there's some agencies that have a really hard time with that because it's not laid out that way. Um, and they have a hard time producing, um, and, uh, it makes it very difficult sometimes. Um, Hood River County, we've been fortunate, um, I think past leadership has at least given us some of that clarity. Um, and I think that was, uh, partly what we were trying to do there with six point four when it was originally put on there. And and I apologize if that wasn't clear initially. Um, but it is really, um, yeah, the connection there is that it, we already have it in an, in one ordinance, um, that way. And honestly, ordinances, um, if commit, commission feels strongly enough as a group, if they want to make those changes, they certainly can. And and at that point, then the forestry department, um, will have to look at that and and manage accordingly, if that's, if that's the direction things need to go or change. I don't necessarily see that detracting from other opportunities out there for revenue. There could definitely be other revenue, uh, ways to make revenue on that tree farm down the road that we don't even know now. But there's some things we haven't even tapped into like carbon and, uh, some other ecosystem services. Will they replace the, the, uh, the timber harvest revenue that we have now? I can't say that, uh, at all. Um, it might supplement or be in addition to what we're currently doing now. In fact, we're kind of, we're investigating that now. We've been researching that for some time. And and there may be opportunities there in the future to help add to actually what we're doing now. So, um, and I think really, if you look at, uh, some of the ideas and concepts here, we're looking to add to what we've got. We don't want to take away from. And so with all these ideas and this strategic planning, really, if we're going to be strategic, I hope that they're, they're realistic. Um, not just goals, but the action items that come out of it are actually realistic. You know, um, I'm going to digress here a little bit to one other section here where it talks of about the, uh, financial stability for the county. And, um, you know, we had some ideas or a goal of, man, maybe we don't have to do that levy in five years. I'd be a little concerned with messaging if we put that out there too strongly that we might not do a levy in five years if we don't have any way to fill the gap that could be created if if we don't have that levy. Um, it took the commissioners a lot of effort over the last few years to get us to a place where we could even get a public levy, a levy passed. And so that's an observation I have. It's, it's fine to talk about it as a dream or even a goal that we can get there. We might not need that levy. But I think we need to really focus harder on, are we going to replace that? Uh, the money that would be required, um, to not have to do a levy. How do we replace that? I think we're going to know when we get there or make good progress toward it. And then that gives us the flexibility. But I would be concerned if, um, from a messaging standpoint, if people think that, well, we'll never have to do that again. It might be a little early for that. It can take quite a while to get the revenue sources. And we've been working for quite a while to find revenue over the last decade easily, maybe longer. Hasn't come easily. So, um, I think there's more work ahead and, um, I hope we continue to improve it. Um, I think this process overall is good, um, because you'll never get anywhere without it. But we do have to have realistic goals. And so a little bit of cross-examination here between staff and or commissioners, I think is important.
Right, thank you, Doug. Other comments from staff as far as just kind of getting back to Brian's comment about overall that it's lacking specifics? Is any other thoughts on where that, where that is?
Uh, this is Jeff. I put in the chat, what is the difference between one point two and one point three? Um, I was not a part of the group that talked about that. And so I'm just kind of curious for those that did talk about that, what those things mean and talk about specificity. What exactly do those things mean? Are they different? And if so, how are they different?
Um, I think, I think I was in that group. I might be able to help with that. Um, I thought that one point three was things like, uh, being able to take credit cards. Where, uh, one point two is more internally facing.
Yeah, I think I see that as like technology versus interpersonal communication stuff between those two points. One being, or one point two being interpersonal communication and one point three being, yeah, more technologic or technological stuff. That's kind of how I view it anyway.
So one point three is external and one point two is internal?
That was my recollection. Uh, I don't know if anyone else who was on that group with me is there, but I do remember the specific example that was brought up with the fact that, uh, uh, we're simply being able to take credit cards, having modern websites, things like that.
Okay. And then, um, under goal one, if you look at the action notes for one point six, I don't see how that really is all that much different than one point seven.
Um, let's see. Yeah, Jeff, I had a couple of question, I had these ones flagged for conversation as well, um.
So I think those, based on the notes, those may be the same thing. Um, recruitment efforts and retention can be more than just what's discussed there. But in the context of this goal, if that's the specific issue, then that's fine. I'm just trying to understand really what's at play here.
I think we were being repetitive and redundant.
Okay, and that's fine. I just want to know that.
Can we, um, from the group then, can can we combine these two, one point six and one point seven? I'm seeing heads nodding. Is it, how about any opposition to that? Does anybody feel really strongly opposed to that? All right. Okay. Um, and then one point two and one point three, do we feel like this is enough distinction to to know that this is more internally related versus externally? Or is this, is this another one where it would make sense to just simplify and combine?
This is Karen. The, uh, the detailed information around those goals that were created are, have now been eliminated. So the background to what was talked about for one point two is now missing. And that was around creating emergency systems and rely on, relying on others, not just for one single department like search and rescue, but having emergency systems in relationships that would support different departments across the county. But in the, um, streamlining the goals, that background information has now been eliminated and it no longer really makes sense where it sits. And that's what's causing the discussion.
Okay, I'm adding that Karen into the notes and in the, the other document. But just that being said, does that provide enough clarity to staff?
Well, that has a, uh, what Commissioner Joplin just said has a very different meaning than what I thought one point two meant. Not that, not that that's bad or wrong, it's just different. And that's fine. I, purpose of my bringing it up was to try to understand what this meant.
The same applies with the first two goals that we just talked about and combined. There was, um, more defined pieces to those as well that included, um, certifications and opportunity for growth and training and different things internally that supported those, the bullet points that were pulled out. And when they're listed separately, they they no longer make sense when you continue to look at them.
So I left, those notes are still in, the action notes are in one point six in the spreadsheet. So those were not, I I left those in because it, it was really clear and I did think that it gave it good, um, direction. I don't, I, again, it's, it's this balance of trying to keep the, the action somewhat succinct so that you can be able to look at it at a glance and then for staff to be able to kind of read through some of the notes to make sure the intent's clear. So we can certainly change the action language, um, to make sure that it's more reflective of the intention. But I I tried to simplify it for obvious reasons because it was, it was a really long, there were many sentences in there. And I just, again, it was, I'm not sure what's harder to understand, the way it's written and it's simplified jargon or the, you know, when you put it with four or five sentences and and trying to capture it that way. So there's got to be a balance somewhere in there.
This is John Harvey again. Is there any way we can link the notes to the bullet points?
Right now, you mean?
Well, eventually, because when we're looking at this, if if there was a link we could click on to see what notes and what brought us to that evaluation.
Yeah, and we can even switch the screen share, I, to the, to the spreadsheet and you can look through it that way if that's more helpful. I, and then in the ultimate plan, yes, you will have all of those notes in the document so that it'll be side by side for staff to to reference. So those aren't going to get lost. They'll be in the final document to make sure the intent's clear.
This is, uh, Jeff, related to Doug's comment about two point three. I would, I would agree with what Doug said, and I wonder if that wouldn't, couldn't be worded differently if people are okay with it to say analyze newer additional revenue sources to reduce or replace, I wouldn't say, or to reduce, say to reduce dependence on property taxes.
Reactions to that change?
Yeah, this is Mike Oates. I I've been trying, trying to come up with similar, same wording. I agree with the intent there. Uh, but I'm, I'm not sure. I totally agree with the way we worded it, that it makes it look like, okay, the whole intent is just to replace that. We not only need additional revenue sources to cover those costs, we need additional revenue sources to do some of these things we're trying to point out here that we need to do. So I I would, I would like to change a little bit to more like what Jeff's saying, where, uh, maybe, uh, work towards securing additional resources with the intent of reducing the need for the local auctions, something like that.
I like the way that you had it written, Sarah, I think. I thought that was pretty clear. I thought that was pretty clear. Analyze newer additional revenue sources to reduce dependency. Our dependence on property taxes. Because that includes the levy and everything.
Yeah, that's good.
You guys are fine with that, okay? All right. Okay, so goal one, we're going to combine these actions. Cool, they are in 1.2, we're going to refine this language based on those notes. There is a comment that came up about the credit cards and some we said that this county can take credit cards, so I'm not sure what. What the if that's accurate.
Yeah, I can, I can clarify. What we were talking about was that we have a lot of relatively archaic systems and how we take credit cards is one example where. To, you know, to purchase an election list, for example, it's a two step process. And it is nothing like the way you use a credit card and any place else on the internet. So we're talking about bringing it up to modern standards. And certainly, yes, I I know that we take credit cards, I know that it was a lot of work to get there. Because our systems are so so archaic, I I'm very sorry if I if it seemed like I was minimizing that effort, I know that it's incredibly hard with what we have. But we should be in a more. Modern framework where taking credit cards is is a no brainer and. It's done in a way that's smooth and easy for the user.
Okay, thank you for the clarification there. What about goal three? Housing increased housing diversity and affordability, you just had three actions under there, it was all of that, did that look good, Eric?
I would just make one minor note under 3.1, it should say support urbanization in Odell and Parkdale.
Okay.
And then the action note, should we talk about that later, or do you want me to? State that now?
Yeah, let's go ahead and just state it now because I have both documents open, let me switch back, let me switch over to that so you guys can also see that screen share. Let me just. Share that as well. Hold on. Try that one more time. Okay, so here's the this document, so. We'd be adding and Parkdale. And then the note.
Yes, and then the note or the the action note under. 3.2 should really come under 3.1.
Okay. Any other comments on three? Anything?
Yep. If I could jump in on that one, I think Eric really clarified that a lot. 3.3, I'm a little confused about, and I think I was on this group, so I think this came from me, but I'm a little confused about. What is towards what end are we defining the commission's role? In supporting affordable housing opportunities throughout the region, isn't that what 3.2 says? We're supporting the city's efforts within within the urban growth areas. We support what the cities are doing outside, we're looking at urbanization Odell and Parkdale, then what does 3.3 say?
When I was trying to read through these notes and understand the intention, having not been in that conversation and make sense of all the notes that were there, I wasn't clear or totally clear on that either. So part of it I was reading as, you know, just a specific defined role was supporting the city's efforts to increase housing opportunities. But then it also sounded like there was another conversation around, we need to think through kind of what. The commission's role is beyond that and working with the cities to help figure that out. As to what else can be done, that was how I read it and tried to understand it, but I it sounds like maybe I missed something.
Eric, can you help there?
I recall a little bit of this conversation. You're right, if the if the commission were to choose. That. 3.1 and 3.2 are the role of the county in terms of affordable housing. Then that would be fine, but I think there was an open question about. What? Is the role beyond that and is there one? If there isn't, then that's fine, it may be a very quick discussion, but. It would be worth talking about, so for example. And and by me saying this, I'm not advocating for it, but should the county be? Actively trying to develop affordable housing? As an example.
This is Karen, that conversation at that particular point was brought up by Les and it was about the county acting. In the form of land banking, for example, the Hood River Crossing project and our role in that project. And for the commission to fully understand that we've had multiple agreements with some of the large entities in the community. The city being one of them, the community college being another one of them. Where the county has definitely played the role of land banking, it's one area where we can participate and we have in the past. And that was the discussion about defining the role. It may change and evolve in the future, but currently our role historically and currently is to be a land banking entity.
Thank you, Commissioner Joplin, does that? Does that help to clarify those two things, or does it still feel like maybe it's one? One combined action?
It does clarify it, I think I would like to see 3.3, so when you say that that the action is we're going to define our role. It sounds like we're basically looking for a pass on this, we're looking to say, okay, our role is really limited, so we don't really have much to do. If if in fact. We're looking to. We know that our role already includes land banking or historically has included land banking and things and some other things. I'd rather see us with actions to do more of those things rather than to just define our role.
So again, I I read this action as if I were the one having to implement this and as a staff person, I would say, okay, we need to get the commission together with maybe. Put us, you know, subcommittee together with some of the city councillors. And have some of the staff from all jurisdictions involved, and we need to set up a working group to talk about how we can work together. On on housing. And take that information back and think and talk about it with the full commission about what the what the role is, what some options are. That's how I would read it and interpret it. And so it sounds like that's something different than what's currently being done. Staff, can you somebody from staff want to weigh in on how, because again, you guys are going to be the ones to have to move it forward, I don't, is this different from what's currently being done? Because we don't want to be redundant, we're not trying to make a plan that talks about what operations currently are. We're trying to figure out what what's new to help the county move forward.
Sarah, this is John Harvey, I also want to clarify, I believe, when we. Made that word cities plural. That we were talking about Hood River and Cascade Locks, and I think it might be better off to just list them as Hood River and Cascade Locks. Because it it can get washed out there if you don't know what it's talking about.
Okay.
And after looking at the action item closer on 3.1, it certainly talks about using. Construction excise taxes to support the city's efforts, and maybe that's more geared towards the Hood River Cascade Locks conversation.
So moving that note down to. 3.3.
That or 3.2.
Other comments on this? I don't know if we're getting anywhere. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess I kind of had the same view that you did, Sarah, I mean, I look at this as having a as the goal or this part of the goal 3.3 meeting that. We were going to go through a process that would help us define our role. In supporting affordable housing, I mean, to me, that's what I, that's the way I read it because I'm still not clear, I guess the issue I have is. Historically, it's always been, what are we going to do to, you know, help fix this problem? And it just goes on forever and it appears that there's no real solution in sight, and so I guess and what we can do is limited. So I just think it would be valuable to have that conversation and and I don't know if there needs to be a subcommittee with the city, I think it just needs to be the county. Commission needs to have that conversation. So I look at that as being part of this. Goal over the next several years.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Mike Oats again, and yeah, I agree with Bob on that, I think that's. It's important. One other thing I wanted to ask, especially Eric, if you could chip in on this, on the action notes. Action areas. Should we put in in there trying to work with the state to come up with? A process that we can use to do these urbanizations in Parkdale and Odell, since right now we're kind of limited?
Well, certainly with Odell. There there may be some some need for some some legislative involvement. But certainly, one of the action items would be to initiate a. You know, a new conversation with current DLCD staff to figure out. You know, if the political issues that that they had concerns with in the past have changed at all.
Yeah, I I think that's important, I mean, if they're not going to allow us to move forward unless we get something changed. I think the next step is we need to work towards getting something changed so we can get Odell accomplished, that was kind of the. The problem, last time we went through this whole process, we kind of got to a point, we just stopped, isn't that correct, Eric?
Yes, it essentially got shelved with the idea that we would. Either have to talk to our legislator or or we would have to just kind of hold tight until. There's a difference of opinion or. Different viewpoint from the state.
Okay, are we getting clarity on these three things then? Other, can we leave these three as they stand with the additional notes that have been added?
I think I certainly understand, yeah, I was going to ask the question on 3.3, and I think I understand now why that's there, and that definitely makes sense to me. What's kind of missing is, you know, since we define the commission's role, but doesn't say we do anything about it. But that is down the road, so I have no problem with leaving it this way. Just my expectation is that once we've defined the role, that's going to result in significant additional actions. Or reinforcement of some of these actions.
Okay. Um. Let's see, goal four. So Commissioner Babbitt's already made a few comments about this. As far as just changing the language. I do think, you know, Commissioner Babbitt's, it kind of felt the comments were generalizing these actions because when I look at these, this a big part of this and I'm thinking back to the interviews with staff. Is that there's there's a technical component to this to be able to move these things forward, so yes, it is about plain language. But it really is a bit broader than that, it's not just how the county is engaging and how the language is being presented, but it's it's providing the infrastructure for that. So I think that's where. This goal language feels a little less specific to just the engagement piece of it, because I don't know that the organization is organized currently. To be able to support some of these actions, so I'm kind of looking to staff to comment on that. As far as thoughts on on this goal for because this is a. It's different from how you do engage currently do engagement.
This is Jeff. You know, there's overlap. Between some of what's in goal for and some of what's in. 1.3. Has to do with modernizing our systems and processes. Anyway, it's it's just more specific as to the function of the systems in the process. Is public engagement and communication internally and externally. But there seems to me there's overlap there.
Yeah, I could see the value in in keeping this in goal for because you would, if you were going to prioritize these actions. You would have to likely upgrade some of the systems there, the infrastructure to be able to successfully implement some of these other things related to engagement, is that true?
I would say yes.
Okay, and I see a thumbs up from Cheryl on that one as well. Commissioner Babbitts, how do you, how does that sit with you?
So first of all, I was not suggesting that we change anything in goal for, I was saying that what it means to me. What I'm seeing in the big picture is the things that stick out are bilingual, bilingual language communications. And broadly targeted, so if I, if after all of this. We come out with new programs and we're communicating monolingually on Facebook, I'm going to be thinking that we didn't have the result that we that I that I had in my head. But I was not suggesting taking the detail out of this, because I completely understand why the detail is there.
Okay, all right, I misunderstood then, but now I feel like I understand your comments better.
Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification, that's helpful.
Are 4.3 and 4.4 the same?
4.4.3 and 4.4.
Me neither.
I think you could certainly combine those. Why 4.4 reads to me and a lot of a lot of organizations will have something similar to this of writing things to be able to understand it at like a fifth grade reading level. And so when I hear plain verbiage, that's to me what that means. When I hear more inclusive communications, that seems more of a focus on translation services and how and materials. Not only now that they're written in a level at a reading level that most people could understand. Now you need to think about how to translate that, so you could combine those things, but if if you're going to have to prioritize things because you don't have resources to tackle it all in one year, you may consider leaving it, keeping it separate. Up to the group. Anybody advocating one way or the other?
I think our new COVID page is a good example of 4.4 where. You folks worked, staff worked hard to explain complicated concepts and more plain verbiage. And then providing it having the tab at the top where you can translate to five different languages is is 4.3. Now, I certainly see that it, we could leave them as two separate things simply because. We might. Phase them at different times.
Okay. All right, if nobody else seems to have any comments on this one, I'm going to keep keep us moving. And then we're back to five that we already talked about separating out the. Adding another goal for just more general economic growth. And then in the forestry, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the the changes there. Again, I don't, we had a lot of discussion around. This action 6.4. And I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure if we're clear where we landed. On this.
I guess I'm struggling to see why it's necessary. I mean, I understand the comment that was made that explained why it's there. But I guess I'm just struggling to see where that becomes a. Part of a goal, how that fits into being one of our goals.
Yeah, I was I was reviewing these, I had a similar question, I think you, I was hoping through discussion I could get some clarity, but I'm still. It feels more policy direction than it does a specific action item. And I feel like it's inconsistent with the some the level of actions or strategies we have in the other areas, so. You might consider taking it out. Especially after I think back to Doug's comments about it already being supported in ordinance elsewhere. Staff comment on that? I'm seeing Commissioner shake head, so I'm kind of looking to staff to see if they have any any objections to that. To just taking that out. Yeah, Eric?
I would defer to Doug, but is would it make sense to merge 6.4 into 6.2?
Maybe as like a note? In there? As they complete the the forest management plan, just in, you know, ensuring there's conversation around how the tree farm is is priority. Maybe as like a note in there as they complete the forest management plan, just, you know, ensuring there's conversation around how the tree farm is prioritized.
This is, I think that could make sense.
Okay, Commissioner Perkins?
Sorry, totally inappropriate for me to even chime in, since I'm an hour and something late to the party.
Chime in.
But I would agree, it seems like an inappropriate place, and it seems like if you did put that in with 6.2, you're basically telegraphing what your decision is going to be as you update your forest management plan. And from a, and Doug and I have these conversations a lot. I'm always looking at public perception and building trust with the public on forest lands and making sure that we're able to manage those lands for the resource that we have now for revenue in the long term. And so I don't know, is that designated for you? We all, we all know that it's a priority. It's a priority elsewhere in the county. And so I think it's better to just take it out and leave 6.2 as complete the 10-year forest management plan update, because it clearly says that, you know, the update is the update. You're going through analyzing where you are and where you want to be and how you're going to manage. And so to put something in that says exactly how you're going to manage, I think defeats the purpose of saying you're going to do a plan update.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Other commissioners, how are you guys feeling on that?
I'd like to ask, how is this different than what I said? Obviously, it is because everyone's reacting entirely differently to the statement I made upfront, but I feel like it's exactly what I said upfront. And yet now I'm getting, you know, now everyone's nodding.
Um.
Did I do wrong?
You know, I got a little lost in the initial comment because of the budgetary impacts, and maybe I just don't understand enough about the the process, but now when I look at that and after hearing more of the conversation, it makes, in looking at this, it makes sense that it's not policy related, or that it's not so much an action, it's going to be a policy decision you guys make.
So I kind of want to air, because I know Mike seemed almost offended by what I said. I want to make sure that I kind of clear the air on that, and obviously, I mean, maybe not obviously, but I am certainly not advocating that we should be having less forest land, or that we should be using our forest land for non-forest purposes. So I just want to get that out there. But Mike, did I, did you, did you think I was saying something different?
Say it again, Arthur.
My belief is that we need to preserve our forest land. I want to see us acquire more forest land. I want to see us use our forest land for forest purposes. I don't want us to be pre-describing what those forest purposes are, because we don't know today what's going to make sense in five years, 10 years, 20 years. Somehow, when I said that, I think you took offense, thinking that I was, well, I'm not sure what you're thinking. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think I said something that triggered your heading off in a different direction. So I just want to get that out of there, out in front, because we are supposed to be candid here, and I want to make sure that I understand how you're thinking, that you understand how I'm thinking.
Well, you know, since I've been on the board, it just seems like we've had this process for using the, our tree farms for other uses, where we're trying to do the best job we can of doing the tree farm and all the processes that go along with that, with the different management tools that we have, and yet still have the right to use those for other uses that can be compatible if it's done correctly. That being said, we can do that as long as we keep the priority of it. It is a tree farm. If that becomes number two, you're going to start losing your tree farms to the demands of the other uses when they start out voting. And I'm just real concerned about that. I mean, we've done a great job in the last many decades to be able to maintain this process for the county and and I don't want to lose that. Maybe it's because of my age. I don't know. Maybe younger guys have a better idea where we're going and how we're going to stay, stay where we are, or maintain what we've got, but that's my, that was my concern.
I wonder if over time, we're going to be redefining what tree farm means. And perhaps it's a loaded term, tree farm might be what I'm reacting to in what I see here in 6.4. And in your description, for me, if we're saying we're predetermining that our forests will be used for cutting trees to sell on contract to the highest bidder as we do today. I don't know that's going to make sense in five years or 10 years. Certainly, there'll be a lot of it happening, but I don't know if that's going to be the only thing we're talking about. And I think, you know, listening to Doug made me feel a lot more comfortable, because obviously, he's, he's thinking much more broadly than that. And I just want to be sure that we, as a commission, think broadly.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, I think this is a tension that's existed the entire time I've been on the board. There's a lot of semantics here. Doug knows, I've argued with him about whether you call it a tree farm, you call it a forest, and whether or not it matters. My opinion is, is that you're better off calling it a forest. That when you call it a tree farm, you're automatically putting people's hackles up. And the reality is, is the forest. I don't care if you want to call it a tree farm, it's a forest. The forest is defined as, it's an ecosystem, and whether you like it or not, when you're leaving trees to grow for 80 to 100 years, it's an ecosystem. And there's ecosystem services that go with it. There's a lot of pieces. So calling it a tree farm does not change people's opinions about what it is. Everybody calls it the county forest. Doug and the forestry department are about the only people in the county that call it a tree farm. So I think we're arguing about things that are simply just different perspectives on it. The reality is, we have to adapt over time to the realities of the political climate that we live in, the constituents that live here in Hutterford County. And in order to be able to continue to harvest, and we've done this well, no matter what we call it, whether we call it a tree farm or a forest, we've done a good job of threading needle and figuring out how to manage properly in a way that people can accept, and we've adapted to allow use by mountain bikers and ATV and horse, and bring those people into a conversation. It's what we've done really well. We just need to keep doing that. And acknowledge the fact that that is what sets us apart from other government entities that own forest land. We're still harvesting without protested sales in this day and age, as a government entity, that says we're doing something really well. And we need to keep doing that, and part of that is adaptation and just recognizing when we need to make change, when we need to let new things happen. That's my perspective on it. I think we get bogged down in the semantics and starting arguing about things that at the end of the day, don't really make that big of a difference.
Okay, I feel like we're to a place where we can go ahead and strike this from the plan. Yes? Any dissent?
I feel like you're doing 6.2 right now in the strategic planning session.
No, that was really helpful, Les. I really appreciate that. A tree farm doesn't seem to have any legal meaning, at least in my quick search. Forest is an Oregon land use term, at least, so I think I better understand what we're talking about.
Okay.
I know, definitely from my standpoint, just having it in with the forest management plan, we can discuss it more at that time. Work is fine.
Excellent. Okay, good. I think this feels like we've got this one to a good place. All right, I feel like the last piece of clarification, we're going to need to change the language on this goal, so I'm just going to highlight that for now, so I don't miss it. And then adding a goal down here. As we, and the reason I have a question about this is as we add this goal, and I'm going to go back and grab the language here in a second that Commissioner Babbitts was recommending. I feel like there should be, in order to be consistent with the other work that we're doing, there should be some actions that support it. So the recommended well, let's see, we have the goal was to support economic growth in other in other areas or in other industries. Or.
I added the chat room. I put the language in the chat room.
High quality job generation there it was.
And I'm sorry, are we, are we also going to discuss gun control next? I think we left that out of our list.
Gun control?
Just thought we needed something to actually debate.
That's not my contract, Commissioner Babbitts. We can't. And then the action you were, the action you mentioned in your discussion earlier was about the addition of an economic coordinator?
Yeah, what was Bill's, Bill Fashin, what was his title? Can anyone recall?
I feel like it was Economic Development Director.
Yeah, there you go. I really think that as our county grows, we need to have one of those. I understand it was a budgetary decision, but I hope that in the long term, in a five-year horizon, I hope we can get back to that.
Okay, so the action here would be it'd be adding economic development staff resources to service other sections of the county's economy. Was there something else that you had in mind to support this goal?
No, and really what I see is that as we're starting to recover from COVID, we're going to have, we're going to see there's a lot of changes in our underlying economy. And it would be, this is when we're going to wish that we had, you know, staff bandwidth to to do the things necessary so that we come out of this hole as smoothly as possible. So in my mind, it is, is that having staff person with expertise in this area would mean that we would be realizing which sectors are never coming back, and which sectors are going to come back stronger than ever, and we could focus on attracting the jobs that we want to attract.
Okay. Commissioner Perkins?
I would just add that you know, MCKED is a possibility in terms of looking at the next few years, MCKED contracting with MCKED for capacity without having to bring on a permanent position with the county is a good way to bridge and get us where we need to go, and is maybe a good short-term goal that then gets us where we need to go long term.
What was the organization that you mentioned?
Mid-Columbia Economic Development District.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Les, I'm glad you brought that up, because I kind of had the question, how long has MCKED been operating, and have they kind of taken over their role?
Yeah, I mean, they're contracting to do as much capacity as a county wants. So, you know, with other counties, they're contracting for a full, basically a person who's focusing on their county. So they're willing to expand or contract based on need. And so it keeps you from committing to a full-time position long term, but gives you that capacity and allows you to kind of define where you want to go. MCKED's been doing that for a long time. And they're set up to contract with, you know, the member entities, so that's really what they're there for.
Yeah, and I would just say that they didn't pick up that role when we dropped it. It just never got replaced. So I think what's being kind of proposed here is that we could request that, or, you know, pay MCKED to kind of help reinstate that role.
Yeah, and just to put a finer edge on it, we've been doing pretty well for the last few years and haven't really needed a lot of government intervention in that area. I am anticipating that we're going to see weakness in several sectors as we start to come out of this. Just from what I'm hearing on the street, there are a lot of areas where things have been going great by themselves that are not going so great now, and could use a little bit of focus, so we don't have the bandwidth to do that.
Okay, are there any other actions that would support this goal? Or is it just this one? And then, and I, and now, and then everybody's good with these four actions that support the agriculture goal?
If I could just ask, what is 5.1? So the numbers of 5.1, aren't those all publicly available already? Are we looking to to hire someone like Eco Northwest to generate new numbers, or what is the goal, what are you really trying to accomplish there?
Somebody want to speak to that?
Yeah, this is, this is Mike. I put that in there. These things change consistently, and the dollars change, and it's important to keep those updated periodically, and so that we as the governing force here in Hutterford County know what that impact is, and it's how do I put this, Arthur? Your opinion, my opinion may not be the same on how much of an impact this agriculture really is. But I want to get that updated to what those numbers are. You know, we always talk about how many million and et cetera, et cetera, and how much is exported, and how many jobs and everything. I just for, for an action item, I think we need to get that updated to know where we are at on that. And if you're saying that information's already available, I think it is, but we just need to get it.
Okay, yeah, because you never find me arguing against getting more numbers. I love numbers. So absolutely, I'm sure I can argue against that. What I'm asking is, are you saying that we should be having someone generate specialized numbers for us, or that we should simply be reviewing the numbers that exist? And it sounds like you're fine, if the numbers already exist, you're fine with using them. I'm not sure if there are some of these that you think don't exist.
Yeah, I think most of them do exist, and Clark Severt, who used to be with the Extension Service out there in Tucker Road, and now is out down in the valley, still continues to work on those numbers and try to keep them updated. And we've had a couple of meetings with him the past year or so, and it'd just be interesting to get them all updated and know where they're at. They're not that difficult to get. They're there. I mean, the pair bureau itself has some of the values on what's marketed out of Hutterford and stuff like that. It's just a matter of getting them. We don't have to generate them. So, yeah, you're right, Arthur.
I think it's more specifically developing like an information sheet about agriculture in Hutterford County and deciding what numbers that we want on that information sheet, and then whether or not that'll kind of determine whether or not they're available or not, and then when we have that, we can update those periodically. So that's kind of how I see that taking place.
That's a, that's a pretty different thing, though, Bob, right? That's like a sec, I think that's, I think that's great, and that's, but that's a second, that's another. I would add that to the notes then.
Well, I think that speaks more to the, to the point Mike's trying to make, though, is that if you want to, if, I mean, if the goal is to highlight that industry, which we called out as a specific goal, very few goals that we have, I think that would be a more I guess, a more interesting output from the, you know, from this next five years would be to have that available. If that's how everybody else feels, but I making sure the numbers are updated wherever they may be out in the ether somewhere. I don't know how much value there is in that, I guess, without having them all together.
Commissioner Perkins, you had your hand up for a while. I don't know if there was something you wanted to weigh in on regarding?
I think they talked through most of it. I mean, I was just going to say that I understanding whether or not there are aspects of the economy, agricultural economy, that aren't captured in the, in the numbers that we already have. That's always my question. Is there something we're missing? Is there a piece of this that isn't captured by the data that's already generated? And if so, then, you know, that should be prioritized and potentially captured. But, you know, it's a, it's a, again, it's one of these long-running tensions here in terms of agriculture versus recreation versus industry, you know. There's tensions over who's the biggest player in the economy. The reality is, is they're all important, and even if agriculture was 20% of our economy, losing 20% of your economy is, is a really terrible thing to happen. And so I think it's just important to understand that and to be able to convey that information. It's not always readily apparent to folks who move here from outside the area how the agricultural system works relative to the rest of the economy. So I think that's always a good thing. It also ties heavily into land use and kind of Oregon's roots in land use and why land use is structured the way that it is.
Kind of, I'm wondering, going back to this earlier conversation we were having about this goal, and Commissioner Babbitts raised it when offering up this other goal of should, should the goal just be broadened? Does it, I just want to make sure we have agreement from the whole commission to move it forward as two separate goals. Because I don't, I don't know if everybody's clearly weighed in on that yet. So we have the goal to reinforce continued support for the ag industry with these four actions supporting it, and then we have this other. And then we have this other goal that we're proposing adding to support economic growth and high-quality job generation with, with the one action under it to consider staffing resources or a contract to help, help advance that. Does it make sense to combine these or to leave them separate?
So this is Karen. To be honest, I'm getting a little bit frustrated. I'm feeling like we're going back a step of what we did in our prior meeting and rehashing the conversation that elevated these items to this chart. So I'm starting to get frustration when we're eliminating things and combining things because we're losing the original intent that landed these items on this chart in the first place. But with that being said, the one that we're particularly talking about, this update impact for the ag industry, I think that the vagueness is purposeful. We need to be up to date with all of the different sources of information. And the ag industry needs to be viewed also very broad spectrum, all of the different bits and pieces. The honey, the grapes, the fruit stands. I mean, everything that's going into the ag industry is a significant part of our community. So I definitely think the ag industry should be called out as separate. And if things want to be added in there as well, I think that's great. But I think we're like nitpicking words and looking for very specific items that were hashed out and discussed at the prior piece of the process to getting here. And now we're kind of undoing that. So I'm struggling trying to understand where you're headed.
Yeah, so the process, just to, just to bring clarity to that, this is the refinement portion. And this is, it's a process that's, that's done and carried out and strategic planning all the time. And so, yes, while we had the idea mapping and trying to formulate that into goals, as people have a chance to reflect on this, and it is hard to break it up in these sessions because in a, in a normal world where we could do this in person, we would be doing it as one continuous meeting. So I understand if it feels a little clunky. But it is important to make sure that we have all of the, or either consensus from the body on these goals or a majority supporting. And so when I hear Commissioner Babbitts offering or proposing to add something, I want to make sure that there's clarity from the rest of the board. So it's not just one commissioner advocating for one thing and the rest of the commission doesn't support it. Because that can create ultimately conflict with staff and trying to implement these. And then say staff brings something forward to the board for you guys to approve, but the whole commission didn't support it or a majority of you didn't support this to begin with. You know, you're just going to vote it down. So again, that's where I'm trying to make sure every time something gets proposed is either coming off the list, being clarified or being added to the list. I want to make sure the whole commission is in support of it, or at least a majority of you are before we move it forward. So I'm just, I'm trying to be responsive. Does that help to clarify what we're doing here? I'm trying to, I'm trying to avoid giving you guys headaches down the line when, when this stuff comes back to the commission and you're being presented with a decision to have to make on something.
Well, is your goal in asking us to combine items because the goal is to reduce this? The list is too large?
Part of it, yeah, when the list is too large, I feel like it can, it can feel just confusing. And especially if you just have one goal with one action. I just question, especially it's inconsistent with how you have the, the other goals outlined. And so I'm questioning whether or not that is a major thing. You guys brought up agriculture specifically to elevate it. It's an elevated priority. And I'm not getting a clear sense from the group on whether or not this other thing rises, rises to the top? Or if it's, if it kind of gets lumped in with, with this other goal? Again, I think it sends a weird message because it's inconsistent with how the rest of the goals are outlined. That's.
I'm sorry, what's inconsistent?
Just having this one goal and this one standalone action that supports it. There's nothing else, there hasn't been any broader discussion from the group as to whether or not there's other actions that would support it.
I guess we've discussed how the commission will work on 20% of our economy. We haven't discussed how we'd work on the other 80%. We have a single item now, which is possibly contracting with MCKED or bringing in staff long-term to promote economic development. I think this is just embryonic, so it's going to develop over time, but this seems like a good start.
If you guys are fine with where it's at, I'm fine leaving it where it's at. Again, I just want to double check to make sure because I, not everybody's weighed in on, on whether or not they agree with it.
Sarah, this is Mike Oates. I'm fine with leaving it in there. It is so specific that it, I don't think it's going to be that complicated to have that additional one in there.
Okay.
Okay, but I appreciate what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, I would agree. I don't see this as being a, an issue for the, for the commission as far as how we receive information back.
Okay. All right, are you guys good with, then with where all the goals are? Or there need to be any other clarifications?
Sarah, this is Mike Oates again, and I hate to bring it up at this late date, but we've kind of touched on in some of these different goals already. But to me, one of the biggest action items we're going to need specifically to most of these goals, and I would put it in number one, where we're talking about fundamental competences of the county, is we need to do an evaluation of our staffing levels. And we've kind of touched that on that a little bit. And this kind of goes back to what Brian Beebe was saying about how we need to be more specific on some of these action items. I think we need to evaluate our staffing levels.
I thought that was in here.
Well, under action notes, you have analyzing the compensation levels.
Okay, did you, can the rest of the commission weigh in on this as well? Do you guys want to see something specific in there about analyzing staffing levels? It is written right now as compensation analysis. But it doesn't necessarily say staffing levels.
If I could chime in, I'll just say I think it's super important. And thanks, Mike, for bringing that up. Because it's just as important as a compensation issue. At least to me.
From a human resources perspective, would you look at compensation and staffing at the same time? Or are those two separate studies?
I would look at both of them separately. Simply because compensation is not just the money that you get in your paycheck. It has a lot to do with your benefits and any other added items that come in and underneath the umbrella called compensation. As far as looking at staffing levels before, we would understand what we were trying to analyze in a staffing level. I surely would want to understand what it is that the county commissioners would expect this county to produce for them. I.e. what services are we offering? At what level are we offering them? Are we going to have IT support and all those other things? Because those will come into play about how we can staff our plan.
Thank you, Cheryl. Commissioner Babbitts?
Yeah, so I completely agree with what Cheryl said. And I think, I knew I saw some language, I just dug it up. At 2.4, the action notes, I think that's where it actually comes in. And maybe, you know, it does kind of get lost there. So I'm not sure if there's some way to bring it up that this is basically, look at what we're not doing, the unmet needs.
This is Jeff. This is Jeff. That, that was my understanding of what 2.4 was. Commissioner Joplin, Commissioner Perkins and Commissioner Benton will all remember that we went through a process in formulating the asks for the food and beverage tax and for the local option levy that included an analysis of what we needed in terms of staffing levels in the various areas. And while those were pared down a little bit, we went through that process. We can go through that again and update it. But I, I thought that's what 2.4 was.
Are you, are you guys satisfied with where this is showing up in 2.4? Or would you prefer to see it up here in, in goal one?
It seems like it fits in both of those goals. I mean, it is a fundamental competence, staffing levels, appropriate staffing levels are a big part of that.
I can add a note here if that feels appropriate? Just to make sure it's clarity and it fits in, it goes under, it's important, it just elevates its importance, I think, again.
Sir, if you look at 2.4 and then look at the action notes that go with it, it kind of talks about, you know, the, where the bare bones currently, what are the unmet needs? Which is basically saying the same thing, that we need to evaluate our staffing levels. But maybe you just need to take that other section out, put it, evaluate our staffing levels in there.
How about, are you guys okay with this?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Anybody not okay with that? Not seeing any dissent. Okay, good. All right, are we getting closer? Again, it's important to have this clarified because that, this way you'll know what to prioritize.
Oh, we just add Garrett to the staff so we don't have to remember this.
I will be available via email for any clarifications. Let's see. All right, any final changes before we move on? Let's go ahead and take a quick break. So, because I'm going to need to rework this prioritization exercise to reflect some of these changes. And so let's go ahead and take 10 minutes. And then when we come back, we will, we'll do the prioritization piece of this. Sound good? Is everybody on board with that? Okay, so 3:43, so come back at 3:53. All right, we should have everybody rejoining us here soon. Okay, welcome back. Give everybody just a minute to see their, their smiling faces. Then that will indicate we're ready to keep moving. All right, well, in the prioritization process, so I'm going to throw some, a little bit of technology at you, but I think you guys can handle it. But, and I think this will make the process go much smoother. If anybody has problems, I can, I can offer some support. So this is a, it's an online polling system. So all you'll have to do is go to a web browser to pull it up. And I will show you in just a moment how that works. The point of the prioritization piece is to be able to give staff some direction under each goal, which actions you think are most important. Once we kind of take the temperature of the group, we'll hear from the commissioners as a final discussion, kind of the most important things they hope to see move forward in this plan. And during the break, I sent you all a, a copy of the notes. If you want to reference them, the notes that we were changing and modifying as, as we went through that discussion. So please feel free to reference those. So does that kind of make sense? Is to first, we're going to prioritize the various actions under each goal area. And then we'll have a final discussion just to make sure that we're clear on what the commission wants to see move forward in the next year. So that, so that staff knows how to, to budget appropriately. And they'll have to consider staff capacity and all of those things that Brian was kind of alluding to earlier as they put the plan together. So there'll be some staff work following this conversation to, to be able to keep the work moving forward. So I'm going to share my screen here to just show you quickly how this works. So you guys are going to visit this link, mentee.com. And let me show you on the screen here what that looks like. So you will go to this URL and just mentee.com. And I'm going to show you a presentation in a moment, a code that you'll put in there. And it's going to take you into our polling. So go ahead and visit that link. And I'm going to show you, we'll go into the polling. So I have a practice question up first. So the code that you'll put in is 441438. And just to make sure everybody's on board and is, is in the system to make sure your votes are counting, I just put an easy question up, so it should prompt you to go ahead and enter a response.
Sarah, this is Mike. Was I supposed to push something back in the end before you switched it?
Just if you go to that mentee.com and then the code you'll put in, in the box is 441438. And that should take you to the first question where you'll be able to enter your response.
All right, how do I get to mentee?
Just go in a web browser, just go to the, the address, the URL is mentee.com. Okay, we've got two people who are able to weigh in. Here we go. All right, you guys are started. You're going to have some great restaurant recommendations for when they open again. Or if they're doing carryout for you to enjoy now, or whatever the rules are in Hood River these days. I don't know. Portland, we're still doing takeout or eating outside. All right, so is, is everybody in? Mike, were you able to get there?
No, I don't, I have no idea.
Okay, all right, so let's, so do you have a web browser open?
Maybe, I don't know.
You know what, Mike, you can, what, can you use the chat feature? If you can send me your responses in chat, I can just put them in for you.
That'd be perfect.
Okay, let's do that. Let's go that way. All right, so I will just. Anybody else having, having any issues? Okay, I think we've got everybody. All right, so no, no comment, much too political. Okay, so next, the next question here is to, you can go ahead and rank these actions. This is from goal one, except for that number eight, just leave that last. I thought I cleaned everything up, but I must have missed one. So you can go ahead and rank the, your top one to to the bottom. It should, it should allow you to rank your top priorities. And so, Mike, if you want to tell me what your options are in the chat, I will be looking for that as to how you want to rank these.
Okay, thanks.
So as you can see, down in the right-hand corner of the screen, it shows how many people have submitted their responses so far. And so the responses are, the rankings will continue to change as everybody puts their responses in. And can everybody see my screen with the results showing? Is that showing up? Okay. All right, Mike, I've got yours now, I'm gonna put, put those in. Okay, is anybody still trying to get their results in? Item 10 doesn't mean anything, it was a mistake, I forgot to delete the option, that was my, my fault. It means nothing. All right, anybody else? I'm gonna close, close this one in three, two, one. All right, same process in the next set of actions here. And I'll send you all a summary at the end, it'll, it'll give us the final results, and I can send a summary of everything at the end. So Mike, same program, if you can just send me your, your rankings on these five.
Sarah, I'm not getting the boxes to vote this time, I'm seeing the results.
So in your web browser, you should, your, do you have the code put in? And did it say, did you advance with my slides? Does it say presenter has moved on?
When I clicked on the results thing, I lost all of that, so I would, I'll try to figure.
Just, you know what, John, just go back in, just start over, go back into the browser and put the code in, and it should take you back to where I am.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Mike, I have yours. John, did that help?
Yes, I just had to minimize the screen.
Okay, good. All right, are you, did you submit yours then? Do we have everybody?
I have not, it'll be just a minute.
Okay, yep, we'll give it just a minute. Okay, I think I have everybody then. Are you ready to move on? All right, next one. Forgot three actions to consider here. You guys are getting faster. Of course, there's less options, but.
Sarah, it might be helpful to folks to explain that those, the little hash marks above each item, you can drag the items to reorder them on your screen if you change your mind. So it's kind of easier if you just get them all down there, and then you can shuffle them around.
Yes, thank you, Arthur, you're, you're turning into a pro, a mentimeter pro. So if that makes sense to folks, yes, you can use the little hash marks on the side to, to move your options as well. But you have to do that before you hit submit. All right, it looks like I have everybody on this one, so I'm gonna go ahead and move us forward. So four options here. Okay, I've had about 16 responses on the other one, so I'm just waiting to see if there's one more that pops in here. Okay. Move on to the next one. So goal five, four more. And just to note, the new goal that was added for the economic growth, we don't need to prioritize that one in this exercise, because there's only one action, so that was really easy. All right, I think I've got everybody on this one. So last one here. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second, we will come back to this, I have one more question that I want to ask. But on the prioritization, any questions about that? Hopefully that was pretty, I feel like that gives everybody a chance to weigh in. It'll give us good direction when we go back to finalize this, to know where, where the commission was at, and staff can, can kind of take it from there. Yes, Commissioner Babbitts, question?
Just so I understand what the tabulation is, is this a ranked weighted voting, or is this simply the number of people who said one, the number of people said two, number of people said three? What's behind the tabulation here?
It will, based on how many people voted for each one, yeah, it will weight each one and, and move it up. So, does that make sense?
So if we look at the bar for one, that's simply the number of people who chose that item as number one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I, and there's, I can export, if you want to look at all of the data, I'm happy to share all of that, you, it'll, it'll export the software, automatically exports it out, and so you can have as much detail as you'd like to see how it, how it calculated it.
No, that's just fine, it's just, there are many different ways of doing ranked voting, I just want to know how we're doing it.
Okay, yes, Jeff?
Are we gonna rank the six goals themselves?
Yeah, that was the next question I had, it was to get feedback from the commissioners on just the things that they want to see advance in the next year, if they had to select, you know, their top goal to move ahead in the next year, or their top two goals to move first. What, you know, again, I feel like staff gets a chance to weigh in on this other exercise, but I think it's important to just hear from the commission on this next question. And so if you were gonna just think about what goals, you know, how you were gonna prioritize those in the year ahead, what would be the most important, what do you want to see accomplished first?
You want to throw them up so we can all have them in front of us?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
You're supposed to have them all memorized last come home.
All right, so here. So consider this, we just consider this goal seven for right now. Should have put it at the bottom, but. And I hate to make it too small, but I do want you guys to be able to see. That's way too small, sorry, can't control my. Well, it's not gonna put it all on the same, so. And I think if we just kind of go through, through the, just have the commissioners weigh in one at a time, that would be helpful. Chair Oats, you're at the top, you're the first one on my screen. Any thoughts on how you would prioritize the overarching goals, what you would want to see worked on first?
Put number two first.
Okay.
Number one, second. Number four, third. Number number three, fourth. And five through seven, I put as equal and put them last.
Okay. Let's see, next, Commissioner Perkins?
I would say would probably be one first.
I'll fix my spelling later, please don't be offended by that. One, okay.
And then two. And then four. And then I think it was, was forestry five?
No, egg was five, forestry was six.
Okay, six. Actually, I'm, I'm kind of with Chair Oats, and that they're kind of, once you get first, through the first few, it's.
Yeah, it's out years from there, so. Okay, that's helpful. Let's see, Commissioner Benton?
I've got 2164...
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Babbitts? Okay, and Commissioner Javlin?
124. And then can you scroll down so I can read the others? Seven. And then five and six. And then the housing one. And the three. Did I get them all?
Yep, you got them all. Did I get everybody? Did I miss anyone? I think that's everyone. All right. And just commissioners, any, as you've now gone through this exercise, any thoughts on any of those actions that you absolutely want to see move forward right away, as soon as possible? Anything that stood out to you?
I'll jump in. Yeah, I mean, I would like to see us begin looking at the, the underlying need for infrastructure to allow us to to step up our game in terms of technology, so number one, basically, I, it just looking at our needs to move forward, and it affects the other, the other pieces too. So it definitely affects the communication side. I see those as kind of interlinked anyway, and it, and the inner, so the, the communication within departments. All of those pieces kind of fall together.
Okay.
I think it's that foundation that we need to, to make all those things work.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, this, Mike. I think it's pretty obvious that we, we all pick one or two is either one or two, so those are, those are our top priorities.
Okay. Any other thought, final thoughts? This just will help come back with a better proposed, our better draft plan, that, that really truly reflects your priorities.
This is Arthur here. What, what strikes me is that, I mean, there's nothing frilly here in our, in our priorities, we're really talking about basics. I think that's where we are right now as a county, and obviously five commissioners seem to be of similar mind in, in how to approach it.
Yeah, that's definitely a theme. Okay. Other final thoughts? Staff, is everybody feeling?
I have one more thing, this is, that's, sorry for throwing it in late, but there's an aspect to number six that I think if we're serious about it, we need to move on right away, and that is actually analyzing funding mechanisms. It's not a, it's not a huge costly endeavor, it's basically analyzing what we would need to be able to acquire more forest land.
Okay. Staff, do you guys feel like you have clear direction? And we'll work through, you, work through the priorities to try and figure out how, how this impacts staff capacity going forward. So that we can bring it back to, bring it back to the group. Any final comments? Okay. Um, let's see. I feel like we can move through these last few things here quickly, so I'm gonna, I want to go back, I hope you still have your browsers open. For mentee, and we're gonna go back and do, before we go there, I want to show you, so in your interviews, I asked you all about values. Um, what guides the organization, there, there, there isn't a clear set of shared values, and so the values are really what guide, what guide the work. It's kind of like the North Star, the compass, like how, you know, how are we going, how is the organization and the commission going to work to actually implement these goals, and what are the things that are going to guide you in that work? And so sometimes people feel like, you know, the values can feel like fluff, but in an organization, it's really important to be able to communicate. Like this, these are the things, these are the things we're going to be held accountable for as we move these actions forward. As each staff member works with their teams to think about how to implement this stuff, they really need to be able to clearly communicate what the values are. It's, it's really important in helping them to scope their work, so. I'm gonna show you the common themes that came up in the interview process. And so I enter, when I interviewed everybody, it was both the commissioner, it was the commissioners, it was staff, and then we also did a staff survey, and so these were the common, these were the words that came up most often, so the ones that are bigger are the ones I heard more frequently. Um, but I just want to kind of give you some context as we think about values before I throw up our last survey question where you get to weigh in. I don't know that we have time to have a big lengthy discussion about values, because you could certainly delve into it pretty deep, but I at least want to get enough direction from the group to be able to craft some language and bring it back to you. As far as, you know, what are, what are some values that should guide this work going forward? So here are some thoughts on wording based on what, what I heard in the interview process. And I'm going to shift back to our presentation here. To our last, our last question, and this is just where you get to share your thoughts on the values that will help guide this. So again, Mike, I have your, you get to choose five words. And I have, if you want to put yours in the chat, I will add them, and we'll see kind of what the common themes are that come up from the group. And if anybody wants to see that graphic again, we'll switch back to that for a moment. It might help inspire, inspire you as you think about your responses.
Well, I hit enter after I typed in my first word, and it closed the poll out for me, so.
Oh, shoot.
Um, I Get enter after you type something in.
I think you should be able, this one, I, I think I made it so that you could enter it more than once, so if you want to give it another go.
What was the code?
Um, the code. It was four, four, one, four, three.
Four, four, one, four, three?
Three, eight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What does it mean if the number of characters turns red?
You've typed too many.
No, but I haven't.
No?
It just, I, I'm not sure why, exactly why it does that. But it's still, your, your responses are still showing up.
Okay.
Sorry, I wish I had a better answer. It's actually, it's been a while since I've used this tool, but I thought this would be hopefully an expedited way to move through these exercises today. I feel a little rusty. And again, this will just provide good direction as we start to craft some language around some values that, because some of these things, you know, meet, have similar meanings. And, and so I think like honesty, integrity, and trust, those are, those are some things we could potentially group into a nice value statement, so we'll see how it shakes out, and then you guys can offer up edits after, after you have something to react to. Anybody else still working on this to submit? All right, um. I know we had about fifteen or sixteen on everything else, so hopefully everybody's, everybody's in. Raise your hand if you're, if you're still trying. Chair Oats, I, I got yours in. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close it out. All right. Um. So the next topic on here that we wanted to talk about was just plan implementation, and we want to make sure that we understand everybody's expectations going forward. Once we have a plan in place, I want to put a section in there as far as what, what the, what staff and the commission expect for bringing progress results forward. So how will, how will we report progress? How will we communicate it to the commission, to the organization, and to the community? And so I just wanted the commissioners to just share some, any, you know, any desires that they have on how they would like to see the, you know, the implementation piece of this take place. Frequently what happens in organizations is we will assign, we'll get the plan put together, finalize it, think about all the priorities, and assign each action by year, so you'll have actions for year one to two, three to four, and then five plus. There'll be a designated lead for whether it's a department or a specific person in the organization tasked with working on each one of those things, and then sometimes you'll see updates, you know, a six-month check-in on the plan, or when staff reports come forward that are related to a strategic plan item, it'll be noted in the staff report, so you know it's kind of an update that's coming forward. Um, so there could be a six-month progress report, uh, I would absolutely recommend an end of the year, like an annual report on where the plan is. And it's just good to keep it in front of people to, to see how the progress is, is happening, and at that, when you do your annual report, it's also good to check in and see which actions, do there need to be any updates made? Is everything still relevant, or has the community context changed in a way that maybe some of the actions need to shift? So um, just any, any thoughts or expectations from the commission on how you'd like to see that come forward?
This is Karen. As far as timeframe for revisiting some of the elements, in the past, we've done a quarterly um, kind of refresh where we get together and we talk about where we're headed or what we've done, or if we have particular items to check off from the prior ones, so like the idea of having a schedule where we revisit this process and have a meeting just around the goal setting that's separate from our usual business.
Uh, and your desires to do that on a quarterly basis?
It seemed like that was appropriate. It takes time to get movement, and then a quarterly basis was enough time to get some movement, but yet not too long that we forget our movement.
Okay. Other thoughts?
This is Les. Um, I'd like to see us kind of have an idea of how we're gonna implement. So, you know, I mean, we, so we have these goals, but who's responsible for what? How, you know, how are we moving this forward? Because we need to have some tangible things that people are working on that get us there. Um, if we just leave these as goals with nobody in charge of pushing them forward, they don't happen.
Yeah, so Commissioner Perkins, so the next step of this, I will take all of this information and put it in a draft plan format, and I'll need to have a meeting with with staff to talk about who would be the leads on these various action items, so that it is clear who's moving what forward.
Otherwise, I'm with Commissioner Joplin, and I think quarterly, at least in this first year, would be nice.
Okay. Are there other thoughts from the commission?
I guess this is the point where I start, you know, I stopped looking to Sarah and start looking to Jeff. You know, at this point in the process, so I'm, I'm eager to see, you know, Jeff's analysis of a recommendation from Jeff as to how he, he thinks is most appropriate to turn this into, into deliverables. And not today.
I, I assumed you were thinking that today. Yeah. So some of these are more resource dependent than others. And so that will be reflected in how we how we organize this, or how quickly we can move on some of these things. And Sarah will help us with that.
Yeah, typically, the next phase, when you sit down with staff, we start to sort the items by resource dependence and staff capacity, staff availability to work and to move the stuff forward. And then also look at the priorities that you all expressed, and try to, try to propose, you know, each, what, what we think could be accomplished each year, and that's how the draft plan is formulated.
From my perspective, I really appreciate the guidance in that this helps to steer resources in the budget process that we'll be going through here shortly. And so it's really invaluable in that respect.
All right, any other final thoughts on implementation? From staff, staff, are you feeling overwhelmed? Is this, is this scary? I just want to check and make sure we are not losing anybody because you're just terrified.
Sarah, this is Cheryl. I'm just actually really excited to see that we have some direction to move forward. I like direction, even if it means a whole great big huge hill.
Good, okay, thanks, thanks for weighing in on that, Cheryl. Any other thoughts from staff? All right. Well, we're towards the end of our process. I just want to be able to, to wrap this up, and I, I know it's clunky to do this virtually. This is not the ideal way to work through a strategic planning process, so I appreciate your patience and um, and just engagement as we've moved through this process. Uh, it feels, it feels good to get towards the end, so I just want to go around and have everybody weigh in, just kind of on how you feel about the process, how you feel about how it went, and what's something that you're looking forward to in the year, in the five years ahead. Um, we've been through a lot, we, just to kind of recap, we looked at the huge context of what's happening in the county. We were able to zero in on a, on a five-year vision. Uh, we were able to think through what some of those values should be in guiding us in the work, and come up with seven goals and some strategies to help move those goals forward. So when this all comes together in a final plan, I hope you all can feel really proud of it. And I hope that you feel like it's going to serve the community really well and help to move, move Hood River County in the right direction, so. Um, let's just go around here quickly and just do our final checkouts and reflection about what you're looking forward to in the next five years. And I'm just gonna go by the order of your little Hollywood squares here on my screen, and so Jeff, you fall in, you fall first on there, so go ahead.
So I've said this at the beginning. For me, this sort of sets, sets the stage for how we move forward. I think when we get into the budget, we find out how fast we can move forward, or how slow we can move forward. But my hope is, is that we are going to start moving forward. And how, how quickly we do that will be dependent on the resources available to us.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Carrie, any final thoughts or reflections from you? Something you're looking forward to?
First, I had to figure out the unmute button. I was pretty quiet today because I'm still in a learning mode, and I felt like I learned a lot today.
All right, thank you. Uh, Chair Oats?
You?
Oh, Chair, you're on mute.
Oh, Les can't read lips. In retrospect, I mean, it was so tough going through that first year and a quarter as chairman, when we were focused so much on financing just to stabilize, that to, to now come in with this process and, and, and go through it is just very thought provoking, and it is very rewarding to sit back and look at what we're looking, looking for and, and try to get there. I'm just, I'm I'm thrilled to get to move forward now. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Chair Oats. All right, Commissioner Joplin?
I was relieved to see all the commissioners point to the one and two items around the, the budget and the sustainability piece and evaluating some internal pieces of the county, so I'm looking forward to working on a sustainable budget, taking a look at staffing levels, and having the opportunity to make some of those evaluations. Like Mike said, we've been so drained from, in a survivability mode, we've not really had opportunity to evaluate quality effectiveness and need, so I look forward to having a more meaningful, robust discussion and decision-making process around what the county really needs, and where we want to go, and how can we get there?
Excellent, thank you, Commissioner Joplin. John Harvey?
Okay, well, I just want to say I'm, I'm grateful for the process, for your work in this. And whoever come up with thinking outside the box to get ahold of you, I would assume that would be admin, but I'm impressed with our Board of Commissioners and our administration, and I just, I believe that we're can, we've got the tools. I don't know if we have the means, but we've got the tools to move forward.
Excellent, thank you, John. Eric?
Uh, yes, overall, I thought this was a really good process. I thought it was great to have an opportunity to open up and to talk freely with commissioners and the rest of the department heads. I think we've come up with a, a good list. You know, at the start of the process, you know, my, my number one goal was to, was to look for a reliable, long-term funding source, and so it's good to see that commissioners see that as a priority as well. Uh, realizing that we certainly have capacity issues that are ongoing, and that may make some of these, some of these goals challenging to, to achieve, but at least they're on the list, and hopefully someday we'll be in a better place where they're on the list and hopefully someday we'll be in a better place where we can tackle, um, all of them.
All right, thank you, Eric. Tina? Tina, are you still with us? All right, um, Commissioner Benton?
Well, I'd like to echo a few things a couple of the other of the commissioners said. Um, specifically that it was nice to actually go through the process this year, where the last few years we haven't had the opportunity. Um, and it was really nice to have staff here, uh, through the whole process. In the past, I think they've been here for one meeting or sometimes just a portion of the staff. And it, it's really nice to continue to have them here because they can remind us things that we're forgetting and, and give that different perspective through the whole process. So that was great. And the things I'm looking forward most to are working on the sustainability, hopefully finding additional financial sustainability and hopefully finding, uh, that, that, um, revenue source. Uh, like Mr. Walker brought up, and then also, uh, really looking at, uh, really excited to look at consolidation. What services actually can we provide and, uh, you know, provide effectively? So that's, that's what I took from it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, I mean, I have some of the same comments. It's, it's really nice. We haven't done this in several years. And, and as Commissioner Benton said, it's nice to have staff here to comment the entire way through. Um, I think it's really good for us to have common goals. We, we've all just had our heads down for a long time, and I think that just eats into morale and kind of people start to lose their, uh, their focus on where they wanna go. So just looking forward to getting us all pulling in the same direction.
All right, excellent, thank you. Commissioner Babbitts?
Uh, yeah, uh, so, uh, I have been through many, many, uh, government and corporate planning sessions. And I, I really feel like I learned more in this session than just about any of them. Uh, and I think a lot of that was because of, uh, staff being willing to, uh, to play ball, to, uh, to be honest and clear in, in, in how things work and what they see. So I really do appreciate that. Uh, and this is gonna sound negative, but I really mean in the most positive sense. Uh, I think, I, I see this as really more than a five-year, uh, set of priorities. I think it's going to take us a solid five years to finish the process of stabilizing our financial ship. Uh, and I think that's fine. I think that, that it's well worth it. Uh, but we will probably be focusing on that more than anything for the next five years. That's really the goals, one and two. Uh, and, uh, but I'm really happy to have an understanding of what all those other issues are. And I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, I'm looking forward to us being able to work on those as soon as we can.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Doug?
Yeah, I just, uh, just wanna kind of echo a little bit of what is being said, at least from the staff side. I mean, I'm glad that we're a part of it as much as we were. It wasn't just a, an hour here or there in the process, but kind of through the whole thing. Um, whether I was kicking and screaming or not, um, uh, it was, it was, it's good because again, you know, there's times you might not say certain things, but then later you're compelled to a little bit more. And, and I think it's just good for everyone to hear it as well and, and wrestle through this stuff. Um, I kinda echo Arthur's, um, sentiment. This is gonna take a good five years for some of this and maybe a little longer, but if we never get started, we'll never get going. So, um, it's good to know what direction you're going in or pointing toward before you start. And hopefully this has, has helped a great deal. And everybody will have a document, uh, at the end of this to refer back to and say, well, how are we doing? You know, a year from now, have we done anything at all? Uh, what do we need to get going on? But what have we been doing? And so, um, I, I like these little things, uh, these, the results of what this produces. So it's helpful.
Thank you, Doug. Um, all right, uh, Brian. Is Brian representing public safety today?
Yeah, Brian Rocket. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of new to the group today. Uh, so a little overwhelming getting caught up on it, uh, with all the graphs and everything. But, uh, I appreciate all the work that everyone's done on it. Um, it was really nice to see, very positive. Uh, I think overall it's important that we bring all the county departments together, uh, for the one common goal of serving the community. And I think with this is a good start.
All right, thank you, Brian. Thanks for being here today. Cheryl?
Thank you, Sarah. So I felt like this was really well done and I just wanted to extend my appreciation for the hard work that you put into this, assisting us in this process. Um, additionally, I would like to echo Bob Benton in around, uh, his statement around understanding what functions the county will offer. Um, and then further, uh, I additionally would look forward to all of the next steps that we will take to support the appropriate staffing needs.
All right, excellent, Cheryl. Thank you. And my pleasure. Heidi?
Yes, hi, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, thanks for, um, leading us through this. I certainly didn't see, um, wasn't clear to me exactly on the whole thing, but it certainly came together today. So I liked it, good stuff. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing the incremental changes that we're able to put forward um, towards the goals that were set out. So that, I am looking forward to that. Change is not always easy, but it is certainly a growing experience. So that'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Brian?
Thanks, Sarah. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think you did a, an excellent job facilitating. I'm very glad that we were asked to be a part of this, um, that the commissioners, uh, really wanted to hear what staff had to say. Um, yeah, ditto to everything that's already been said, and I'm very happy that, uh, one, goals one and two were, uh, the commissioners', um, priorities, cuz I think they're really important, so.
Yes, I think that's been echoed many times. All right, I, I think the other, is somebody else on the phone from staff?
That's, Tina said that her chat says she can't unmute. Uh, I'm wondering if she just needs to do the star six trick to unmute?
Um, Tina, if you're in there, if you, or Tina, if you want, you can, uh, you can put in the chat your final thoughts if you can't figure out how to unmute. Cuz if, from my perspective, it looks like you are, you're not muted.
It shows, it shows muted on my screen. Oh, there she's unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
All right, I exist. Um, so I would, um, like to thank Sarah. I think you did a great job. A lot of, everybody else has said that. And I appreciate, um, you bringing to the surface, you know, some of the staff's concerns. Um, I would tend to agree with, I think it was Arthur and Doug and Brian that, um, I think it's gonna take longer than five years to get to where we wanna be. And a lot of it has to do with the staffing levels. Um, having been involved in a countywide project for several months now with the conversion of our accounting software, um, with just the existing staff that I have and being expected to do our regular duties as well, it, it has been quite overwhelming. And so I would just ask that that be, uh, something that's thought about as we move forward with the other projects. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Tina. I'm glad we were able to get your comments in and figure out that mute situation. Um, well, I just wanna say to wrap everything up, I, again, I just appreciate your, your engagement and participation. I know this isn't the best environment, but you know what? We, we did well working with what we had. And, um, I will be connecting with Jeff towards the end of this week to figure out the next steps. Obviously, we have a little more work to do with staff to get to take all this information and really pull it all together um, to bring forward that draft plan. So after Jeff and I connect, we will send out an email that gives you an estimated timeline so that you know when to expect this draft coming forward. Um, cuz I, again, it'll just depend on staff's availability and my availability as well. This is my very busy season. I'm doing a lot of these retreats and strategic planning and goal setting all over the place. So, um, we will find some availability in the calendar and keep this, keep this work moving forward. And again, it's just, it's been a pleasure working with you all. Thank you for having me.
That the answer? Are we done?
Yeah, so if you have any final, uh, comments, Chair, or if you wanna close us out?
Well, I definitely wanna thank you for this process. I think we've accumulated a lot of, uh, good information and, and a process and goals to lead us forward, and I'm looking forward to it. And, uh, I, I never would have guessed at the start of this how it would have all come together. You made it happen. So thank you very much. Wanna thank all the staff for all the work and time you put in. I know it takes a lot of time. Commissioners, appreciate it. And so at this time, I'm gonna close our work session for this twenty-fifth of January, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.